Good evening. The gavel seems to be AWOL tonight, so I'm just going to open the meeting with my voice instead. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 17th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. We're starting at 6:00 PM this evening because the council has a budget work session following at 7:15. So I'd like to welcome everybody from coming tonight. We have a really great crowd. Councilmember Goodman is excused this evening and will not be joining us. And I would like to ask those in the audience that would like to join the council and I to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to say welcome to our city administrator, Wally Bobkowicz. This is the first council meeting that he is sitting up here with us. Welcome, Wally.
Thank you.
Under Special Business this evening, I have two proclamations that I'm going to do. Unfortunately for our first proclamation, our recipients aren't here to receive it this evening. They're unable to attend, so I'm going to do a few excerpts from that proclamation. And I want to thank Wendy Lindquist and Sabrina Coleman for LifeWire for working with the city on putting this proclamation together. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects one in four women and one in seven men during their lifetime, and whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by indifference, and whereas ending the cycle of this vicious crime requires the courage of survivors and the support of the larger community, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 to be Domestic Violence Action Month in the City of Issaquah. And I urge all citizens to speak out against domestic violence and support LifeWire's efforts to prevent and end domestic abuse in our community and increase public awareness of and action on this issue. Next proclamation that I'll be reading this evening is ID 0556 Substance Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation, and I'd like to get Jerry Blackburn to join me up at the podium.
And friends.
Hello, friends. Thank you for coming. Whereas many of our young people do not develop the skills needed to productively go through adolescents substance-free, and whereas substance use can and does negatively impact the development and potential for our youth to succeed, and whereas substance use prevention has a greater impact than later intervention by changing a child's early life path away from maladaptive solutions and towards positive behaviors and productivity, and whereas substance use preservation is an extremely cost-effective model in comparison to later high utilization interventions, in general terms, a savings of up to $10 or more for every dollar spent on effective programming, and whereas the benefits of increasing protective factors while reducing risk factors and engaging social-emotional learning provides a universal benefit to all of our youth, and whereas by stopping the drug use before it starts, we can prevent the disease of addiction and create stronger neighborhoods in our community. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as 2019 as Substance Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Issaquah, and call upon citizens to join me in engaging inappropriate programs and activities to promote comprehensive substance abuse prevention efforts in our community. Jerry, I wonder if you'd like to introduce your guests and say a few words.
I would, absolutely. Thank you, members of the council, and thank you, Mary Polly, for this proclamation. It's hard not to be a little bit emotional. Our community just recently has went through the most horrific tragedy one can imagine that was, you know, a direct result of substance abuse and substance use, and it really draws into focus the unbelievably important need for prevention services in our community. Influence of Choice is -- oh, I'm Jerry, by the way. Hi, everybody. I have the honor of functioning as the Executive Director for Influence of Choice, and our sole mission is to reduce substance use in our community and promote medical, physical, and social wellness in our community. And we do that as an organization. We have tons of members here. We walk down from our meeting just to make sure that we are here to take and accept this proclamation because it's really important that as a community, we recognize preventative interventions as the solution rather than just these, the high-risk, high-intensity interventions that occur later. And again, there is no more tragic example of that in our community than the loss of young people as a result of overdoses. And so, thank you for this, and thank you in the future for everything that you're able to do specific to human services because there are lives on the line. And I'll introduce Katie. She's our Special Projects Coordinator, and you can introduce Hannah.
Hi, I'm Katie Moller, and this is Hannah Freyshinger. She goes to Gibson Eck. And we actually have the pleasure of advocating on behalf of youth in Issaquah, the Issaquah School District, to make change, and I feel very fortunate to have this job. And hopefully, all of our students will positively be influenced by the work that we are doing.
Thank all of you for coming this evening. [applause] This portion of the meeting is open for audience comments. This is your time to address your counsel. Please limit your comments to up to five minutes. And we do have a sign-up list, and those who signed up will be called up first. If you didn't sign up, don't worry. We'll call after to see if there are others that would like to address counsel. And if you are here as part of a group, can you please identify that group when you're up at the microphone? And if you are in the audience and listening this evening and you would like to indicate to counsel your support of the comments you're hearing, please do so by raising your hand, and that really helps them understand which item you came for and where you feel like you strongly support the comments you're hearing. Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Larry Franks.
Come on up, Larry.
Mayor Polly, council, and city staff. My name is Larry Franks. I'm at 24001 Southeast 103rd Street, Issaquah, for 47 years so far. I'm actually here to speak for my constituents. And her name is Ms. Ankerinkas Shawicca. She's also, we'll tolerate the nickname, Chinny. Chinny would like to thank the council, Mayor Polly, and the city staff for recognizing her and Issaquah Creek as Issaquah Treasure Number One. She's also grateful for being reared at the Issaquah Salmon Hattery, known as Issaquah Treasure Number Two. However, Chinny is worried the vast majority of her offspring will die in their attempt to travel to saltwater from the Issaquah Salmon Hattery to Chilchol Bay, a mere 49 miles. Something can be done. Something must be done. Chinny is counting on her friends to help. In particular, she is depending on the friends of Issaquah Salmon Hattery who work closely with her official sponsors, the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and other biologists. Chinny is asking you, is asking the city, to be friends to friends and support their efforts to keep her progeny a living treasure, not a historic footnote. I thank you, and Chinny thanks you.
Thank you, Larry. Tisha, has anyone else signed up?
Yes, Linda Peters.
Oh, and there are lots of hands in the audience that are up. Linda, would you like to come up?
[inaudible]
There you go.
Good evening, and thank you, mayor and council. My name is Linda Peters, and I am today representing People's Climate Action of Issaquah. This feels a little low. And I'm a resident. My address is 155 Mount Olympus Drive Northwest. And I want to start by saying this is an amazing town, Issaquah. I've moved here recently. Prior to that, I lived on the Big Island of Hawaii, which is another beautiful spot. My testimony today is being submitted as a member and representative of the People for Climate Action. This group was recently formed in the City of Issaquah, for the City of Issaquah. And it joins over 10 other PCA city groups. And these groups are formed as part of a coalition in King County. So anybody in a green scarf today are my comrades in arms, ready to fight the climate change fight. Our group has reached out to our elected officials and our staff to share our mission, our goals, and to learn a little bit more about some of your ideas and challenges. I know Issaquah is far advanced in having a sustainability department. We were able to meet with Mr. David Fujimoto and some of his staff and talk through, again, some of our goals and some of theirs. And that is something that's, like I say, a step ahead of a lot of other cities, so I congratulate you on that. We understand that this meeting today is going to be a lot of focus on budget, and we just want to urge the council and the mayor, as they look at the budgets, that they consider things that will impact climate action. I was really delighted when I walked in and saw all these young, beautiful faces, and just happened to chat briefly to say that they were here from a college to a civic assignment, I believe. And I just think they are our future in this climate. It was my generation that I feel responsible for helping create this mess that we're in. And so, I really, really strongly support our youth that are coming together and really doing what they can to assure their future and their future families. And I know some of you have gotten a copy of this book called How Cities, Businesses, and Citizens Can Save the Planet. I haven't read it all through yet, but I'm going to, and it does really inspire me to realize that we are the solution, not looking necessarily to the state or to our federal government for help. So for people that don't know, the PCA mission is to help local governments develop and implement comprehensive climate action plans, and that's our local goal here too in Issaquah. And I know most of you are probably familiar with K4C. Some of the people in the audience may not be, which is King County's Climate Collaboration that started in 2014. The goals were set so that we would reduce greenhouse gases 25% by next year, 2020, by 50% in 2030, and by 80% in 2050. And these are critical goals. The bad news is, we're not going to do it by 2020. No county is going to, no city is going to do that. The good news is, we do have opportunity with all of us working together, the business, the elected officials, and the people, to make the goal. City of Portland is a model city within the Pacific Northwest. They have done amazing reduction in greenhouse gases while increasing a lot of jobs and a lot of population, so we're hoping that we can learn from some of their challenges and successes. And I just want to close by saying, this is going to take bold, brave action to make a difference and to save our planet, but I think we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, there you go. I figured at least the people with the green scarves on were going to raise their hands on that one. Is there anyone else on our sign-up list?
Yes, Harlan Gallagher.
My name's Harlan Gallagher, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Issaquah School Board and representing the 21,000 students and families in our district. I wanted to chat a little bit about the opiate crisis that I'm sure it's been alluded to already with your proclamation. And what I've handed out to you is our statement that we put together and released last week. U.S. Council knows how challenging that is to develop in between meetings, so a lot of work went into that. And I want to read just the bottom three bullets of that. So it says, "We know that the opiate crisis will not be fixed overnight, but within days to weeks, we commit to, one, deeper and broader partnerships with our mayors and city councils as well as with local law enforcement agencies to address the easy access to opiates. Two, community-wide discussion that is inclusive to students, parents, teachers, and community members across our district. And three, focused parent-community meetings in our most impacted school communities to discuss prevention, early intervention, and accountability strategies." So I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about what that will actually look like for us. So when I think about deeper and broader partnerships, I really think about us breaking down silos so we can better serve all of our kids and all of our families across your municipality and our district. So by doing this, I think that we can maximize the impact of our tax dollars. So for collaboration, certainly between the city council and the school board, I know that we've asked for it and you've asked for it. I'm here tonight to say thank you for joining us in a linkage tomorrow to talk about this singular issue of the opiate crisis in our community. Two, I encourage you to continue to direct city staff and law enforcement to work together with our district. You provide a great partnership with us with the SRO program. And, you know, I think that some of it is so personality or environmental dependent that we might not have the synergy amongst our three schools across our district in order to make sure we're maximizing the use of those dollars and in that process. And number three, I want to invite you to the community meeting that Skyline High School is hosting on Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM. The second thing is communication. I think that we can certainly do a better job of making sure that we have a shared vision between the district and the city, and then more importantly, that we share that out to our community. Because the more that we have a collective shared messaging, really speaking out against alcohol and illicit drugs, the stronger that our students will hear that. And if you flip over to the backside of these graphs, you'll see that we do pretty well as a district when it comes to our kids staying away from alcohol use. But if you look, by the time they're seniors, we far exceed the state. And what that says is that we collectively, we the district, you the city, we need to do a better job of really speaking out against this and why it's dangerous to our growing adolescent minds and bodies. And the third one I want to talk about is partnership. So I spoke a little bit about, we spend $150,000 a year on SRO services that we share jointly with the City of Issaquah. And, you know, when I think about prevention and enforcement, I really wonder, like, have we aligned our policies both as a city and a district to make sure that we're maximizing the ability and effectiveness of our SRO program to really make sure that we're focusing on prevention? I think that we can have frank discussions on how to address the easy access that our kids have to alcohol, to opiates in our community, and what are things from a policy standpoint that we may need to adjust? And then talk about, like, what are the barriers that we have that currently exist in us working together? And then, I think it's most important that the community sees is that just as we set the tone for our district as a board, you also set the tone as a city for, you know, how we work together and how we say to our kids and our families that this is not a place for opiate use. So, looking forward to a meeting with you guys tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Harlan, and thank you for inviting and coordinating this meeting tomorrow night. The council does have a budget session tomorrow night as well, and I am very appreciative of all of you who could do both of those events. Thank you very much. Super important to the community. Thank you, Harlan. Is there anyone else on our sign-up list? No. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address the council? Steve, come on up.
Hello, Mayor Polly, city council. My name's Steve Perera. I'm a homeowner here in the Old Town area for about 12 years now. Before I get started, I want to say welcome to Wally. I haven't had a chance to say that, so I thought publicly we should say that. Thank you. Four things on my mind. I want to be respectful. We're five minutes together, so I want to try to maximize that. The first was, I had an opportunity to go to the Jazz Festival that was at Influence Park. That seemed like a fun time, so thank you all for that. Second item, the library recently put down new carpeting and added new seating and table spacing, so it's just a good shout-out to our library as a public resource for people to use. So if nothing else, if you don't even get a chance to stop by, please do. Third issue, as we start going into budget talks, I didn't want to talk about a specific issue, but just kind of generally overall, I know that the city is looking at kind of master plans for three perks, and I just wanted, at one point, to stand in front of the council and say, I think we're looking in the wrong place. I think we need to look at focusing our money and our spending on maybe the connections between the neighborhoods and the communities and preserving areas and the minimal infrastructure. We need to maintain those going forward. I think to build structure for some 38,000 people isn't the best use of the funds that we have now. I think in context of future debt capacity to do that, I think we need to kind of change that focus of far as spending money on fixtures that are going to run down and just maintain and grow who we're going to become. I'm a big fan of parks and open space, but I don't think that's the best use for the limited resources that seem to be what we're facing going forward. So just wanted to put it out there for your consideration. I'm sure I'll talk more about budget in the time ahead, but wanted to kind of set that groundstone. The fourth issue is the recent Evergreen Ford Lincoln site. I admit I have some concerns. At the best, it seems like a city business, city isn't doing the job responsibility that I expect to be done. At best, it seems like a city found a way, a loophole, to get some approval of what I never thought would be approved was a business within 100 feet of a fish-bearing body. At best, the city, that's the best case scenario. The worst case is that I saw people at the meeting, attending the meeting, asking questions that seems to me the city staff should have been asking, the city should be asking that aren't happening. There's not, seems to be some respect. I'm not just pointing at staff, but I, as kind of setting the tone, as the governing body of the city, I'm certainly expecting you all to do and set that tone. I guess I both want to ask and to the degree that I'm able to, to insist that I'd like to see the city council go into executive session if needed and come up with two things. One is a moratorium on future growth until we get plans in place that are going to prevent what happened from happening again. I don't understand why we're so at risk. We decided we're going to become this different city than we are today by maintaining our open spaces, by maintaining our creeks, our fish salmon, as the previous speaker spoke about. This is a treasure that we're at risk losing, and we're not doing the things that we say we're going to do, that we promised are going to be put forth. So I just want to see that maintained. Barring that, I'm not willing to wait until the rewrite of code until that happens. So I guess I'm asking, what are we going to do about that? I don't want to just add plausibly. I admit I'm kind of an introvert, and being angry looks the same whether I'm an introvert or not, but I don't think we're doing our job, so please do something now. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Do a second call. Anybody who would like to get up and address the council? About any of the Polly'side students? Okay, no, just kidding. And this is the third and last call for anybody who would like to address their council this evening. Okay, with that, I will close audience comments. And we will move on to committee and regional reports. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three reports. So the Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery Council met on September 19th, and we had several items on the agenda. The first one was that we approved the project subcommittee funding recommendations. So these are salmon recovery funding board grants that are given by the Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery Council to various projects. We also had a presentation about the value of our rivers, which was by an individual from American Rivers. And this was interesting because it discussed how to quantitate the economic value that preservation and conservation of our streams and creeks and rivers actually brings to a community. And it is a big study that's going to be conducted that will actually provide some quantitative metrics around that value. We also had a presentation about how salmon populations are monitored, and we heard a success story, which was the Citizen Action Training School, which was a presentation by Mid Sound Fisheries Enhancement Group. And I thought some members of our communities might be interested in this. It was a presentation about a program to educate interested citizens to learn about the history of our watersheds, tribal management of natural resources, salmon recovery, food chain dynamics, water quality, and more. So this is for citizen education, and there's a lot more information available at the Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery website if individuals are interested. The next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be Thursday, November 21st, and it will be at the Mercer Island Community Center at 2:00 PM. I also attended the Cascade Water Alliance Board meeting on September 25th at 3:30. We had two items. The first one was to approve the Cascade rate true-up adjustment for 2020. And this item, we actually did not vote on. We will vote on this next meeting. And this has to do, this is important to Issaquah because actually Issaquah had the largest percent change that would be relevant to this true-up, and it would be in our favor if we do, if we are able to do the true-up now versus in 2021. It also affects other cities less that are on a two-year budget cycle versus our council, which is on, or our city, rather, which is on a one-year budget cycle. So that will be coming back to the Cascade Water Alliance, and we will be discussing that at the next meeting. And then we also approved a water supply audit in an amount to not exceed $146,000. And this will be an audit of all the member cities for their individual water supplies. The next meeting of Cascade Water Alliance will be on October 23rd at the Cascade Office in Bellevue at 3:30. And the last meeting is the Cascade, or sorry, the King County, King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting. And this was on September 18th, and we reviewed the regional food grants and approved the recommendations regarding the regional food grants that are given by the King Conservation District Advisory Committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Before I move on to Councilmember Ray, I think it could have the order this evening. This would be our opportunity maybe to have a conversation with council about the true-up so that we have some direction depending on who is attending that next board meeting.
Okay. That's good.
It's Miss Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board will meet this Thursday, October 10th, at 4:00 PM at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. There are a couple of interesting things on the agenda. One is, the first is around mobile integrated healthcare and potential partnerships. We're going to get, receive the annual report from the King County EMS cardiac arrest. And then finally, we're going to be looking at a mid-year biennial operating budget amendment. Also, if anyone is interested, on October 26th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, at Station 82, which is up in St. Amish, they're going to be having an open house that day. So if you want to go to the fire station and climb on the trucks.
Do it.
Opportunity. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Thursday, October 3rd, was a meeting of the Growth Management Policy Board at PSRC. I was unable to attend because I was out of the country. I do know that the subject was Vision 2050, and there's still quite a bit of back and forth going on on the terms about the policies and the action items for that plan. I'll have the opportunity to review the meeting minutes and video before our next council meeting, and I'll provide a report at that time about what happened last week. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Batiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September, I've got a couple of updates and then just a couple of announcements on some events that are coming up. The Eastside Human Services Forum met on Thursday, September 19th. We started with an organizational review from a group of consultants that have come in to do an organizational review for the Eastside Human Services Forum. It was very interesting to go through this as a board that works in so many different areas, and we all come together from different backgrounds, and this was a whole organization. And this was a whole organizational review on how everything is functioning. So we're working our way through all of that right now. We're going to be working with, meeting with our work teams, and then findings will come forward a little bit later toward the end of the year. We also went through our 2020 state legislative agenda review, and I was just going to run through that very quickly. There are a few different bullet points here as far as the Eastside Human Services Forum goes. It is to support access to basic needs and health services, to make homelessness rare, brief, and one-time by making housing more affordable, I'm sorry, more accessible, support older adults and people with disabilities, strengthen early learning and youth services. And new this year are some cross-cutting priorities that go, that really cross against all of those areas and how they all come together. So the, we'll be meeting actually tomorrow to talk more about organizational reviews and then have another meeting coming up in December. Then also, the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District Board met on October 2nd. And at that, we were able to receive an update from Greater Seattle Partners Regional Prosperity Plan, given by Brian McGowan. And this was the first time, or we've done introductions, but this is the first time that we've heard a complete overview of what this new group is working on. And the, just to boil it down, the goals and strategies that they're working on now are to build the region's global identity, to attract new investment and advance trade, to attract and retain talent, to strengthen our regional competitiveness, and to elevate regional economic development to achieve inclusive economic growth. We also got an update on the Amazing Place midpoint review. And just to remind you about what the Amazing Place is, it's the region's economic strategy that was adopted by the board, and it serves as the official comprehensive economic development strategy for the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District and is approved by the U.S. Economic Development Administration. This is, this is the midpoint in the five-year, and it is really long and really interesting. It's, it's on the website for that group, and if you're interested, I have a copy with me tonight, but it's really interesting to read through. And finally, just a couple of announcements. The Eastside Interfaith Social Concerns Council and ARCH are teaming up. They have a teaming up workshop that's happening, partnering, it's the Eastside Faith Communities Partnering with Cities and Developers to Solve Affordable, the Affordable Housing Crisis. It's Saturday, October 12th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at St. Luke's Lutheran Church, 3030 Bellevue Way Northeast. And that is coming right up, and I wanted to make that announcement. And then also, on Monday, October 28th, from 6:45 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., there's the Eastside Community Forum on Homelessness and Poverty, and that is at St. Jude Catholic Church in Redmond. So just wanted to give those couple of announcements. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Deputy Council Batiste. Council President Marts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is going to be meeting this Wednesday, October 9th, at 7:00 p.m. in Renton City Hall. We have two potentially actionable items on the agenda. The first is the 2020 SCA legislative agenda. That is relatively uncontentious. The second item is the proposed King County Regional Homelessness Authority. That is whatever the opposite of uncontentious is. So I don't believe that SCA will be, or PIC will be taking action at that meeting. I think that we will be hopefully receiving additional information on governance and budgets and the role of this proposed organization within the existing homeless, homelessness NGO infrastructure in Puget Sound. And then there will be a pre-PIC workshop at 6:00 p.m., navigating toxic social media, tips and best practices for making the most and avoiding the worst of social media. And then the second report I have is on Growth Management Policy Council. We had a meeting Wednesday, September 25th. There was one action item, which was a review of the Greater Downtown Kirkland Urban Center designation. As people may know, there is a totem lake, basically, urban center for Kirkland, but there isn't an urban center where the urban center of Kirkland is. And so GMPC recommended support of that, or voted in support of it. And then I'll just mention, the next meeting is Wednesday, November 20th. And the reason I bring it up is actually, I found out, I am in my sixth year as an SCA PIC representative to the GMPC, and according to the bylaws, I can't do it again next year. So that will be my last GMPC meeting, and I will have to find some other way to represent Issaquah. Perhaps still with PIC, but also looking at other roles that I can take originally. Six years goes by really fast. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Marts. Onto the mayor's report. I only have one item on the mayor's report this evening, but it's huge. So I am sure our council has heard in some of our community, but last Tuesday, October 2nd, the King County Council approved the Conservation Futures Bond Project Grant Awards, which included our full request for the city of Issaquah for $5.3 million for the Bergsma acquisition. This is what makes it hashtag full Bergsma. This is awesome. These bond projects were part of the county land conservation initiative, and in all the King County approved, the Conservation Futures Advisory Board's recommendations of $35 million in project awards. The Bergsma grant was the largest award. The Bergsma property was purchased earlier this year thanks to the bold and innovative work of the city, the city council, the trust for public lands in King County. The 45-acre acquisition was also greatly aided by the terrific work of Save Cougar Mountain. I want to thank the city council again for your courage and your trust in us to take this buy-and-hold approach for this significant regional acquisition. These grant funds from King County represent a large portion of partner funding that was part of our planned funding strategy, but it is not all of it. Next up will be the state RCO grants that we'll be applying for the next year in 2020. And the next steps with this grant from King County is we will be completing an inter-local agreement, or an ILA. It will be coming before the city council next month, once it has been received from King County and finalized. And as we work with King County staff on the ILA, we will also get a better idea on the timing of when we can anticipate to receive the $5.3 million. On another note, staff has begun working with King County and TPL on scheduling a press event celebration for the entire community now that this key piece of our overall funding strategy has been confirmed. So again, I just want to thank you all for that extremely brave and extremely bold decision that you made for the city of Issaquah to pursue this acquisition in such a short period of time, such a large parcel, and connected to wonderful Cougar Mountain Wildland Regional Park. Thank you very much. That concludes the mayor's report, and we'll move on to informational updates. And this evening, we'll be getting an update on the regional clean fuel standard. This is an informational presentation. Council will not be asked to take any action this evening, and I'd like to ask David Fujimoto, our Director of Sustainability, to come to the lectern. Good evening, David.
Good evening. Thank you very much. So tonight, we're here to receive, as Mayor, Mayor Lou Pauli, I just mentioned, an informational presentation from Craig Kenworthy. Craig is the Executive Director of the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, and it's about a clean fuel standard which is being considered for adoption in the central Puget Sound area. You may be aware that the city has adopted policy on greenhouse gas emissions, seeking to reduce emissions by 80% by 2050 from a base year of 2007. And we also have a variety of objectives and policies designed to protect the health of the community. For Issaquah, we know that auto travel contributes to the air quality concerns such as oxides of nitrogen, particulate matter, and primarily in proximity to high-volume traffic areas such as long I-90s. So there's some relevance locally. And according to the State Department of Health and the Washington Tracking Network, which includes monitoring data from a variety of scientific sources, there are several census tracts in Issaquah with moderate to high air quality concerns that are in the 70th to 80th decile for diesel emissions. We also know that the transportation sector is approximately one-third of our community wide greenhouse gas emissions, and that identifying some sound regional and market-based approaches are important in our endeavors to achieve some of our goals. The Puget Sound Clean Air Agency has been studying this issue and looking for a regional solution, and we'll hear a little bit more about that tonight. The clean fuel standard has some connections to the city's legislative agenda, which will be considered by the city council, as well as the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, or K4C, which we're a member of as well. And there are some cities that are considering commenting on the role through that avenue as well. So as I mentioned, I'll turn it over to Craig for an overview of the approach.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So I actually have a fire truck at my office window every day. I'm on the phone, and I'm like, so this is not new. Last summer, summer of 18, during the worst of our wildfire smoke, one of our staff got a call from a reporter, and they kept saying, well, people out here love the outdoors. There must be some activity that's safe for them to engage in. And we had some of the worst air quality in the world at that point, and our staff kept saying, really, there's nothing people should be doing in terms of vigorous activity. And finally, out of frustration, because the reporter insisted there must be some safe activity, our staff member said, well, I guess you could go scuba diving. And of course, that ended up in the article. And it'd been Seattle news that ended up with someone contacting me and reminding me that, well, we have to tread water before we start, so you shouldn't suggest scuba diving. So we can laugh about that, but the point of that was, there was nowhere to escape last summer. Only about a third of the housing units in our region have air conditioning. So even for some filtration from the smoke in those circumstances, people could not avoid the health effects of all of the irritants of all of that wildfire smoke. That's an indirect effect of climate change on us as a region, because we get wildfire smoke, not just from our own fires in Washington State, but from Canada, from California, from Oregon, and even sometimes from Montana. So we're dealing right now with paying for climate change. It used to be we would talk about, climate change is coming, future generations are going to be dealing with climate change, they'll be paying for climate change. We're paying for climate change right now. So what are some tools we could use to reduce greenhouse gas emissions? I'm going to talk to you about one of those tonight. So this is an outline of what I'll cover. Our mission, we are the regional clean air agency for the four counties around central Puget Sound in Washington State. The legislature gave counties the option of doing their own air quality work or having ecology do it. All of Western Washington has regional air quality agencies. I talked about some of the effects of climate change on our region. This is from, actually from PSRC's Amazing Places strategy that was discussed earlier. And these are just some of the effects of this. One thing that doesn't get mentioned as much that I was talking to David about is we tend to focus on sea level rise, lower flows. It'll change the system of the flow. We'll have less flow in the summer, more flow in the winter. But one thing that will also happen is we'll have greater siltation dump off of glaciers. So even inland, not sea level rise, but inland, we're going to have riverbeds lifted up by the amount of material that's dumped in from the glaciers. It's not just water coming off of them. So we're likely to see increased risk of flooding even inland from the glacial melt and all the siltation that occurs from that. I talked about wildfires. This is from the National Climate Assessment released by the Trump administration last November, where the scientists found that 50% of the wildfires that we had in the last 25 years in the U.S., this is not Canada, that we basically doubled the wildfire acreage in the U.S. due to the effects of climate change. That's because the forests dry out sooner in the spring, the snowpack melts, higher temperatures, lower tree moisture. We extend the fire season, we extend the risk of more fires. What are the pollution sources in our region? David mentioned how much were cars. In Issaquah, about a third. Overall, transportation is the biggest single emission source in our region, and over time, as our electricity grid gets cleaner, it will continue to be the largest source and get even bigger in terms of its share of greenhouse gas emissions. So why are we talking about a clean fuel standard? So several years ago, our board, which consists of elected officials from the four counties and also one representative of the largest city in those four counties, told us to look at additional regional strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It was mentioned earlier, we set the target of 50% reduction by 2030, similar to the city's target, an 80% reduction by 2050 of transportation emissions. The board then directed us to look at a number of different strategies. We analyzed 11 of them in detail. What we came up with is that a clean fuel standard, which requires reduction in the carbon pollution from transportation fuels, was the highest impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions, had the highest certainty, and also had additional air quality benefits. So I'm not going to spend a huge amount of time on other air quality benefits tonight, but I will say, as was mentioned, we expect to see reductions in pollutants from a clean fuel standard, which is a greenhouse gas standard, but also results in less particulate matter, less air toxins, less diesel pollution, which is a known carcinogen. So we'll get additional public health benefits, particularly along major roadways, from a clean fuel standard. We are the only state on the West Coast that does not have a clean fuel standard. California's had one for about nine years, Oregon's had one for four years, British Columbia has a variant of that. I want to be clear, our board would prefer that the legislature enact a clean fuel standard. Last year, it got out of the state House, did not get out of the state senate. But our board is looking at adopting a regional standard in light of inaction by the legislature on such a standard. What's the basic premise of a clean fuel standard? So basically, what it says is that over time, in steps, you've got to reduce the amount of greenhouse gas pollution or carbon pollution in transportation fuels. So if you think about, you would actually score a fuel and say, this is how much pollution you have in your fuel. So take fossil gasoline, regular gasoline would have a score of, say, 100. Over time, you would say, you've got to reduce the amount of pollution from that. So perhaps in the second year of the program, you've got to reduce that by 2.5%. And then you've gradually, over time, have to make additional reductions in doing that. One of the benefits of this tool, though, is it's a performance standard, but it doesn't tell you how to get there. It says you've got to hit this target, but you can get there wherever you think best, and you can get there using innovation, you can get there using a market that trades credits. As an example, oil refineries that are covered by this would have these options. They could say, okay, we're actually going to improve the efficiency at our refinery, so our score's going to come down that first time from 100 to 98 because we're going to use less energy in producing the gasoline. They could say, we're going to produce our own biofuel. And there's actually a joint project up north now with Phillips 66 and a company called REG to actually blend biofuels in at the refinery. Or they could go out in the credit market that I'll talk about, where they could say, we're just going to go to the credit market, and people who generate credits by using lower carbon fuel, we're going to purchase those credits in the market. So the pathways are determined by the person who's obligated, the entity who's obligated. We would not determine those pathways. We would set that performance standard. So it's basically displacing the higher carbon fuel with lower carbon fuel. When I talk about credits, that's one credit is one ton of carbon pollution removed from the system. So how this works, I talked about, you set a target. The target increases over time, year over year. You've got to meet that particular target. If, let's say, you're at that 100, and you need to get to 98, and you don't take actions to do that, you generate a deficit of, say, two times the number of gallons that you have in the system. You've got to meet that target by either buying the credits I talked about or engaging in other tactics. In terms of who can generate credits, credits can be generated by several entities. So for example, one of the things that will happen in the system, we expect, is electricity is going to substitute in more for fossil fuels. So electric utilities, public fleets that engage in electrification, public entities that engage in electric vehicle charging, transportation transit agencies can generate credits under that system, again, by switching from a higher carbon fuel to a lower carbon fuel. The way we score that basically is we look at what's called the lifecycle intensity of that carbon fuel. So we look at, how is the fuel produced? The electricity or energy required for that? How much carbon that produces? How is it transported? How is it refined? And how's it ultimately used in a vehicle? So I gave some examples here of what are cleaner fuels. Biodiesel, renewable diesel are lower carbon fuels. Electricity is a lower carbon fuel. It's also very inexpensive in our region. Ethanol is an example in some cases, and then things like landfill gas. So how does that work? I mentioned this earlier. A low-carbon fuel producer, let's say, someone who has biofuel, could offer to sell that or sell credits to the high-carbon fuel producer. They could blend that fuel and get lower emissions. That's the trading part of the system. Electric vehicle charging, someone who generates credits there could also offer those credits in the market and say, I've generated this many credits by switching to electrification. The refinery or the covered entity that imports fossil fuel in the region could purchase credits from them, or they could go with a buy and blend method. Who can receive credits? I touched on this earlier. Several of these different entities can do that. This is transportation fuel related. There are a couple of things, though, that actually are not strictly on-road transportation that are eligible to receive credits. Similar to the California and Oregon programs, so some cargo handling equipment and certain forklifts that move things around are able to receive credits. forklifts that move things around are able to receive credits. So in looking at this, we did an analysis of high-level economic impacts we would expect from this kind of standard. And we had a company called ICF do a report that looked at, what about fuel availability? Can we do this if we electrify over time? Are we able to achieve these targets? Do we have the capacity in the grid? Do we have enough biofuel available to achieve these targets? What would be the economic effects of that? We also looked at the public health benefits that I mentioned earlier in terms of less hospitalization, less sick time. So what we found on fuel availability is, we do have the room in the system here to engage in more electrification of the light-duty fleet and eventually the heavy-duty fleet. Part of that is that a lot of the utilities have had their load actually start to drop as energy efficiency has kicked in, and things like LED bulbs. So they've got space in the grid for electrification. There are challenges that we will have to deal with in some locations in terms of substation issues. So it's not a grid issue, it's a substation issue. So an example is, we had a conversation at one point about working with residents in a community to do a bulk buy of electric vehicles from Costco, if we could make that work. So when we were doing that, we talked to some utilities who said, "That's a great idea. Be careful, though, if everybody went home in that same small area and plugged in at the same moment, we might have a substation issue we have to deal with." One of the advantages we have, though, for some other regions on this, is our load in the evening is not the same as, say, California. Everyone comes home in California, they plug their electric car, and they turn the air conditioning up. We don't have that same pull on the system at this point. So that's one of the reasons we have more space available. On biofuels, while the state has some standards for biofuels, they really don't have a lot of teeth in them, so we're not using as much biofuel as is available. We do expect more biofuel that's actually produced in Washington State. For example, there's a facility in Grace Harbor would come into our system so that there is space overall for the fuels that we need to make some of the shifts. In terms of the economic effects, if you boil everything down on this that I'm going to talk about in the economics, what you basically have is, more money stays in our region or in the state, because we don't produce gasoline or oil. We refine it in some places, but we don't drill for it here. So dollars that the public would spend on those fossil fuels stay in the region overall. I talk about increase in fossil gas and fuel prices. I'll talk about that. We did a projection and a worst-case scenario on that. So part of our economic analysis, we looked at what would happen in the four counties in 2030. And for those of you familiar with the R E M I model, it's been used in a lot of different ways across the country by a lot of different entities. It's an economic model that looks at your economy, plugs in the one change you want to make, and says, "What's the ripple effect of doing that?" So OFM projects our four-county region will have 12% growth by 2030. So we looked at, what are the impacts of a Clean Fuel Standard on that? Basically, what it found is it's a wash, and I'll explain why in just a moment. The worst-case economic jobs impact was less than 1/10 of 1% on top of the baseline growth. So basically, it shifted growth potentially from 11.95 to 12.05 as opposed to 12. There was a small net increase in jobs in the all-in-the-most-aggressive emission-reduction scenario, and there was a lesser impact in the early years. One of the reasons for that was this. When you look at our overall economy as a region, it's very diversified, and our fuel spending is actually a fairly small component of that. And what you would get is what I mentioned earlier, which is, you would, over time, have to make investments to meet the standard, but you get substantial fuel savings as you start to electrify the system. Electric vehicles are about 60% to 65% cheaper on the fuel cost than a gasoline or diesel-powered vehicle, in addition to having much lower maintenance costs. So over time, more money stays in the four counties because of those dollars not being shipped out of state, and the cost of the investments is matched essentially by the cost of the savings. So let me back up on that for just a second. So one of the things we found in this that was interesting was, we looked at four different scenarios of emission-reduction target, ranging from 10% to 25%, which was the most aggressive target. And on the economic effects, again, these are very tiny changes to small changes. What we found was, the 10% target was actually not as good for the economy as the 25% target, because you still had a lot of cost for the investment to make the 10% target, but you didn't see the fuel savings, fuel cost savings that you get from the 25% target. So essentially, going partway in did not have as much of a benefit. Again, these are very tiny changes on top of small changes overall, but the more aggressive target was actually better for the economy under that particular model. So I talked about fuel prices. We did run some fuel price scenarios to look at what would happen, but we ran worst-case scenarios that said that the refineries, we have one in Tacoma in our region, and then there are other refineries up north that would be covered by this rule. If the refineries did not do anything, if they just passed along the current cost, that there could be an increase in gasoline prices in 2030 that could range from 22 to 57 cents. What I will say about that is this. The actual cost to move around a mile on average in the region actually is the same or cheaper for gasoline vehicles, for overall, for light-duty vehicles, rather, at that point, because of starting to mix in electrification, hybridization, and fuel efficiency. So there could be, worst-case scenario, again, the refineries don't do anything, an increase in fuel costs. That said, we actually know on the ground that that's not what's happening, because we've seen things like a project up north with Phillips and REG. Par Pacific, which was US Oil, has been talking about branding in alternative fuels. So we did run a worst-case scenario on fuel costs, but we don't think that's the real-world scenario of that. So the overall effect of this is, it's an opportunity to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. Our board is going to look at a target of 25%, which would get us a long ways towards our 50% reduction target by 2030. It also would provide opportunity for other public health gains across the region. At a regional macroeconomic scale, it's basically a wash in terms of the investments versus the cost savings. So let me pause there. I'll talk about our timeline in just a second, but I know the council has a budget session coming up, too, so I went through that really fast. Let me pause there for what questions, and then I'll talk about sort of next steps, potentially.
Thank you, Craig. Council, so I think the first time we've had such a comprehensive presentation on this. So this is your time for some Q and A, if you'd like to have it, or we will proceed to schedule. Oh, there we go. Councilmember Walsh.
What are our opportunities to act on this and to be interactive and have an impact?
So I'll talk about our timeline, because that talks about our process. So we're releasing a draft rule later this week. We will then start a 90-day public comment period that'll run into early January. Our board will have a public hearing in December. So the council has the opportunity to weigh in with comments during that particular process. I want to emphasize again, our board would prefer that the legislature take action on this, and I know the council's going to talk about that, I think, as well in terms of legislative agenda. But it's really the opportunity to weigh in during that public comment period with any thoughts, comments, concerns the council would have to our board of officials.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? Council President Mertz.
Sure. So I think this is all good and commendable. The scientist in me worries a little bit about, at some of the margins, you mentioned biofuel. I mean, biofuel is another form of diesel, right? And diesel burns 161, creates 161 pounds of CO2 per million BTUs produced, right? All the liquid fuels, I mean, diesel, you get efficiency because the engines tend to be smaller and lower output, but diesel actually produces more CO2 per million BTUs than gasoline does. So while I think that this is great in trying to move away from liquid fuels, which all produce CO2, I worry a little bit about some of the language in here that may be trying to move towards specific liquid fuels that don't necessarily have the overall impact that people hope out of an effort like this.
So that's a great point. One of the things I didn't get in the details of is, we actually use a model to score the carbon intensity of every type of fuel stock, so that we look at whether, for example, renewable diesel, which is a different form of regular diesel that can be dropped in 100% and isn't a blend. So that actually has to be scored on its carbon intensity from the beginning of production all the way to the end. So we attempt to capture some of that with the specific types of those biofuels and what their carbon intensity score is.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, Craig, I want to thank you for the presentation tonight, and I just wanted to check in with Director Fujimoto to see if there's any closing comments, or are we good? We're good.
I want to thank the council and the mayor for the opportunity as well. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar, which was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized by the council, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Would someone care to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's meeting agenda.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We have no items under regular business this evening. And under good of the order, I did jot down a few things that I've heard during regional report-outs, and also maybe potentially on the Clean Fuel Standards that I thought you might want to touch on at good of the order tonight. But before I go through this list, is there anything in particular that you want to talk about? Let's remember Ray.
I just have a couple of points. One is, on Saturday, Eastside Fire and Rescue celebrated their 20th anniversary. Mayor Polly, System Administrator Bob Kovitz, and I attended. Eastside Fire and Rescue has served this community, and their success has been built on the work of very many people, including some of the others up here, who really have contributed to this organization's success. And it was very apparent at this awards banquet where we celebrated 20 years of Eastside Fire and Rescue, all of the work that went into making this happen. Second, I attended Salmon Days. Loved the parade. Huge success. Wanted to do a shout-out and thank you to all the volunteers and the countless hours that were spent to make that possible. And mostly, I wanted to thank the salmon for being the reason for this great event.
That is awesome. Any other good of the order? Let's remember Hunt.
So I wanted to take a minute to explain the Cascade Water Alliance true-up issue. And Mayor Polly, if you have anything to add or correct. So this is with regards to a true-up policy. The board had planned on, for the purposes of smoothing the rate, that the board would have the rate true-up adjustment be sort of smoothed over the payment level monthly adjustments to 2021 member charges. However, in the particular case of this year, Issaquah has a $114,822 true-up in our favor, and that is the largest amount percentage-wise in the favor of the member cities. And it's very important, in this particular case, too, because of our budget situation. And so rather than proceed with having it be spread out in future payments, it became apparent that it would be, I think, better for the city, looking at the number of things that are cut that are less than that amount in our budget, if we could just have the true-up for this budget cycle. And so this will come up next, at the next Cascade meeting, and if there is any feedback for me, I believe I will be representing our city in that meeting as the alternate for Mayor Polly. And I will be advocating that, in my opinion, I think the city would be better off if we were able to have that adjustment now. The other complicating factor is that most, if not all, of the other cities are on a two-year budget cycle. So for them, it's much less consequential to their budgeting this year.
Thank you. I'm just going to add a couple of points. That was a great summary. King County Cities for Climate Collaboration is meeting at the same time, and Councilmember Hunt and I decided how we're going to fill both chairs at the same time. So she's been pretty well-versed on this issue, even though it comes up through the Finance Committee. She is also my backup on the board. There are no other member agencies right now that are interested, and this is a pilot program, this true-up. Most jurisdictions, except Issaquah, are on the two-year budget, and so that was the impetus for doing the pilot. So it is not an actual practice right now. It is a pilot program, but it's only the first year, and this came up. So I guess what would be great is if you could kind of weigh in on whether or not, I have voiced it in the Finance Committee, Councilmember Hunt has voiced it in a board meeting, but we really do believe that we think the true-up should just happen in this year, and that could then feed into your budget conversations, I bet. So, any thoughts?
I have a question, more than a thought. So since this is water, right? The true-up is around water. So this really is going to go back into the Water Enterprise Fund, not the General Fund. So any refund we would get really wouldn't help with our General Fund problem? Question mark.
Great question. I have Sheldon here. Sheldon, do you think you could come up as Public Works Director and answer Councilmember 's question?
You're correct, Mr. Ray. Though any savings or correction that happens at the Cascade Water Alliance, the money would return into the water utility and not the General Fund.
I was afraid you'd say that.
Actually, Sheldon, if I could get you to stay up there until we finish this one item. Then what would be your recommendation on whether or not the pilot should continue for this year, or we should actually ask for the true-up this year?
The pilot is one where they were going to do the true-up and correction, not in 2020, but in 2021. If we waited till 2021 and we stayed true to the true-up pilot, then the true-ups would occur every other year, and you could plan for it better. So if the true-up was going the other way, we'd have about a 12-month period to plan, budget, and things like that for our utility to be able to pay Cascade what we would owe them. Versus if you ask for it now and kind of upset the apple cart a little bit, you may end up in the future having to go, "Oops, we need to do a budget correction mid-year and pay our share of a true-up early, because now we're kind of shifting gears." It's kind of upsetting a little bit, the apple cart, for what the pilot is about.
And do you have any additional information you could give the council on, anticipating that we may be on the wrong side of a true-up, meaning that we may actually be using higher allocation of Cascade Water Alliance water than we do right now?
Yes, we may be.
So, good question. Good question, Councilmember Ray, and good answer from Sheldon. So thoughts on whether or not to pursue this? It does hit the Enterprise Fund and not the General Fund.
So one more thought is that, for, I think that for our city currently on the one-year budget cycle, it does make it a different situation for us to be in than the other cities. So once we are on the two-year budget cycle, as we expect and hope very much to be on after this year, I think it makes more sense. But for right now, it seems like it puts us in a strange position, because we are doing our budgeting every year, but this particular true-up would happen every other year.
So there may be some logic, being the only member agency not on a two-year budget cycle right now, to ask that in this year of the pilot, we true it up, and going forward, it is on a two-year cycle. Does the council think of that? Any other thoughts? Yes? I see a thumbs up. Councilmember Ray, Councilmember Walsh.
I think it makes sense. I mean, since this may be our last year as an annual budget city and not a biennial budget city, let's true it up this year, and then as we go into biennial budgets with everyone else, we will be on the same schedule as everyone else, so it seems clean.
General head nod agreement, that that is the message that Councilmember Hunt should take into the meeting, looking like head nods. Couple other things, thank you. Couple other things that I noted tonight. Deputy Councilbattiste talked about a faith communities meeting that's coming up this Saturday. They are actually looking for an elected representative to serve on one of their panels. I was originally scheduled to do it and will not be in town, and am checking to see if there's any interest or availability for someone else to serve on it. So if there is, please let me know. Elizabeth Mulpan is following up as an advocate for that in our city, and I need to give her an answer by, as soon as I can. So, oh, Deputy Councilmember Battiste.
Thank you for bringing that up. Elizabeth had reached out to me as well, and I'm not positive that I can do it. If anything changes, I would love to, but if anyone is interested, that would be great. Yeah.
Please let me know if you can by tomorrow. I think the panel is fine if they don't have it, but it is much richer if they have an elected sitting on the panel with them. And then the last thing I had noted down tonight was, this was the first presentation on clean fuels, and we did get a question asked about, what kind of action could we take? And so wanted to just take the temperature of the group on what you heard tonight, and if there are opportunities to sign letters, what is it that we, as the administration, can do to help you with? And are you interested in showing support? Council President Mertz, Councilmember Ridgestein, Councilmember Hunt.
So how appropriate that we hear about this tonight, and we also, in recent days, have started hearing from this new organization in our community, also devoted to addressing climate change. So it seems obvious to me that this is something that we should hear more about and reflects So it seems obvious to me that this is something that we should hear more about and reflects at least a segment of our community's deep concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
I completely support that we continue to move forward for opportunities to work with others collaboratively on something like a clean fuel standard. I think that's in our DNA, and we should be taking action.
Fantastic. Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I agree with my colleagues' comments. I also was interested to hear about the air quality concerns that our own city has, and I think it's important to also consider that. I know that air quality is very important for childhood health and for public health in general, and for asthma and other concerns. And so I think that, for a number of reasons, including the enthusiasm that our community has for climate action, that we should proceed. I am interested in writing a letter or doing something with more gravity, such as a resolution. It was mentioned several times that the optimal solution would be at the state legislature. So if we can support, and my preference would be to let the state legislature know that we strongly would advocate for this kind of legislation. And so I would be interested in a resolution to that effect, and as far as I know, we have time to do that.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on clean fuel standards? Deputy Counsel President Bateese.
So I, too, would be supportive of moving forward, and it's been talked about, but we have a lot of interested residents in our area that are, in our whole community, that are really thinking about this right now. I'd like to hear more, and would also be interested in something coming forward that we could review.
Good to know. Thank you. Let's remember Walsh.
Less one to support and a letter.
Great, thank you. Was there any other items for good of the order this evening? None. I will do a quick little read of upcoming council meetings. So this evening at 7:00, later than 7:15, because I am going to give a short break after this. Council will be having a budget session, and they will be hearing some staff presentations this evening. On Tuesday, tomorrow, October 8th, there'll be a 5:00 PM special council meeting, as was just mentioned earlier by Harland from the school board. Our council and mayor will be going to the Issaquah School District Administrative Offices at 5150 20th Avenue Southeast in Issaquah, and it will be a joint meeting, Issaquah School Board, to discuss current and future actions related to the opioid crisis. And then council will rush back over here for a 6:30 PM council budget study session in council chambers. And again, there will be some staff presentations. On Monday, October 14th, at 6:30 PM, there's a council special meeting. It is a public hearing, consideration to oppose initiative number 976 concerning motor vehicle taxes and fees, and a 7:00 PM council budget session, again, with some presentations this time from the departments. And on Monday, October 21st, 7:00 PM, council regular meeting time, and some of the potential agenda items for that are an informational update on the dark park at Tibbetts Valley Park, public hearings for the proposed 2020 budget, and levy and revenue sources. And on regular business, potentially a proposed 2020 budget parks fee, proposed 2020 budget utility tax, and bid awards for ITS, traffic camera upgrade. There is no executive session this evening, and so we will be adjourning the meeting at 7:16. Thank you. At this point in time, I think maybe a 10-minute break between meetings, so that offer setup would be great.